Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, June 24, 2019. Prior to the start of tonight's proceedings, I'd like to remind everyone that we certainly welcome public participation. There are two places on the agenda this evening where you might choose to make a comment. One would be under D on your agenda, public participation, or, excuse me, yeah, D, under public participation. You can speak there on any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item that may not be on the agenda. If you would prefer to wait until we get to the agenda item on which you'd like to speak, feel free to do that also. With that, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. As those of you who have been following city council matters in recent months, as you know, we had the pleasure of choosing a new city attorney about four, five, six weeks ago, and one gentleman who you're going to see frequently at our city council meetings is one gentleman, Matt Rose, and the gentleman here tonight is John Donahue. And John, I'd like you to come forward, please, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay, item C on the agenda tonight, approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The motion is approved as presented. Now we come to the part in the agenda where anyone is welcome to speak on any item they'd like to, and thus far, I only have one person who would like to speak at this time on the agenda. Again, a reminder that if you would like to speak tonight, please get your speaker request form to city clerk Fazekas. Speaking first is Mike Embry.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members, city manager and staff. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Tom Cleveland and his airport staff for all their support for this first annual Balloons Brews and Blues. Took a lot of work to put it together, but what I think was a very successful event. I'd also like to thank John Petragallo, our chief police, and Jeff McMaster, our fire chief, for showing up to our event. More importantly, providing community-friendly staff members who talk with the audience and made an extra effort to get out, and that was really special. And John also sent Kelly Sullivan, who were community outreach, and she deputized a lot of young people in the audience to be police officers, so we had a lot of young people at the event. One thing for that. You know, and we also had several nonprofits out there this year. We had a new group that came out and fingerprinted young children, and we actually had over 50 young people fingerprinted and given to their parents, so we think that was a successful opportunity. We also had other nonprofits. We had the American Legion out there, and they really promoted our Hometown Heroes program. We also had the Youth EAA and the Civil Air Patrol Kids and Recruitment, so, and they also helped with the parking. We don't know the total number of tenants, but anything between 1,000 and 1,500 people this first year to come out to our event. But due to safety issues, we didn't allow the balloons to fly, and we thought that was a very appropriate thing to do, made a decision by the pilots, more importantly than the staff ourselves. But the rest of the attendees had a good time, enjoying the food and the music and the activities as a whole. I don't know how you measure a successful event, Mayor. The only thing I can tell you, we had a lot of positive comments. We had a lot of people out there, community people, that really enjoyed themselves. I guess the major, the guide of a successful event is when you run out of food and beer, which we did, so that was a good part of it. In closing, I'd like to say that the City of DeKalb is blessed to have one of its staff members, who is really our outstanding vocal diva here, Ruth Scott, who sang with her band, and she did a magnificent job, and people had never heard of her, and even the other bands says, "Oh, my God, who is that band?" So we have a real hero here at the city hall. The other thing that went over the weekend was very successful was Greek Fest, and they had a great turnout for both days. And then this Wednesday, Music at the Mansion features the Rat Pack, and this is also our Wednesday to honor City of DeKalb employees and Park District employees. So, thank you very much.
There's just nothing to do in DeKalb. Michael, thank you. Yeah, we're going to have an after-action meeting. I know Tom Cleveland from the airport. The chiefs, Petragallo and McMaster will be there. They've asked me to sit in on that, to just sort of do an after-action, an assessment of balloons, of brews and blues, but I think as a first effort, Michael, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move along now to presentations. Item E on your agenda, Hope Haven FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report by Vocational Coordinator, Michael Newman. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Jerry Smith and city council. How are you guys doing? It's a pleasure to be up here. Again, Hope Haven is such a need in our community, and especially with some of the things that continue to go on, and then we trying to combat social services and help people out there and get out and advocate for homeless people. At this time, I'll just be a few minutes, but I want to talk about some of the things that has greatly changed in a good way for our programs at Hope Haven. One of the things that we were able to do was change the length of time. Our residents are given 90 days of shelter, and for the last year or so, for our families, they have been averaging 76 days of shelter. Our single men are averaging 78 days of shelter, and our single women are averaging 67 days of shelter. Just this time last year, we were up over 100 days of shelter. And so, due to that, the reason why we are getting people out of shelters faster is because we have funding. We help support people on their first down payment for a down payment towards moving into an efficiency or one bedroom, or even helping families continually for a few months. And so, that has been one of our great goals, and it's working in a good way. Other than that, we still are seeing people, close to 50 people a night, and we also have 12 people housed in our SRO program. We call it our Single Room Occupancy Program. That's for people who have mental, a dual diagnosis of a mental illness, and we house, we are fully housed there. And so, it's some of the great things that we're doing in the community. And like I said, last year, we fed over 50,000 meals, and this great community is doing that on a nightly basis by bringing a meal in by a single family or church. So we always are thankful, and sometimes that, we don't get a chance to say that, but Hope Haven thanks this community and thanks all the people who do great work for the people that inhabit in this county.
Okay, Michael, before you leave the podium, perhaps we have any comments or questions, Michael? Yes, Alderman Fanouken.
Michael, I'd just like to congratulate your son.
Oh, thank you.
On the walk on the football at NIU.
Yes, thank you. Coach Hammy gave him a great opportunity. That's a great coach, and my son put in a lot of hard work, and we're going to continue on and continue to support the Barb's. The Barb's football program was one of those things to make that happen, and I hope that we can continue and put good name in this great community.
Yeah, well, that was great to hear, great to read about your son.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Wonderful, yeah. Alderman Morris.
I just want to say I'm really excited about what you guys are doing, and I'm, you know, I live right there nearby, so I want to get more involved with you and see what I can do to support.
Awesome. I'm always open, and I look forward to working with you, and we'll sit down soon and talk about the area. I try to get on everything over there and do what I can for the community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, Michael, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, city council.
Item number F on your agenda, appointments. Approval of these reappointments tonight can be done with an omnibus vote if the council approves. Do I see anything, anybody objecting to that? If not, I would like to ask the council to approve these reappointments in omnibus form. Number one, the reappointment of Joe Mitchell to the DeKalb Public Library Board for a three-year term, July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022. Number two, reappointment of Susan Richter to the DeKalb Public Library Board for a three-year term, July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022. And number three, reappointment of Gary Vandermeer to the DeKalb Public Library Board for a three-year term, July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022. I'd ask for a motion to approve these reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'm pleased to report, in addition to tonight's reappointments, which have just been approved, that our three new council aldermen, Morris, Smith, and McAdams, have agreed to take on additional responsibilities as liaisons to three of our boards and commissions. Carolyn will be working with the Community Enhancement Commission, Tracy with the Landmark Commission, and Scott with our Human Relations Commission. I thank them. I hope you join me in thanking them for stepping up to this important assignment.
Item G on the agenda, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion. Are there any items on the consent agenda to which a council member would like to be removed? If not, these are the items on the consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 28, 2019. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 10, 2019. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through June 24, 2019, in the amount of $2,689,408.63. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through April 2019. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through April 2019. And finally, number six, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, May 2019. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing at 6:15 PM is Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. That's one-year use of funds for program year 26, which is April 1, 2019, through March 2020. First of all, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, I'd ask city manager Nicholas to speak to the item, please.
I'll be happy to, Mayor. I'm just going to be very brief. This is something called a CAPER, which is an acronym for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which has been made available to the public in a variety of ways, as I explained in the background. This is an opportunity every year to take a look at what has been accomplished toward the priorities set in the five-year plan, and generally speaking, those priorities include a number of goals, such as increasing quality of affordable housing, eliminating chronic homelessness, public facilities improvements, and support of public services. And we don't have anybody to speak to that tonight, but that's what the point of this public hearing is for.
So much of this activity, from a city hall perspective, is carried on by Joanne Rouse. Joanne is here, and I want to thank you publicly for all the work you do, and all the number crunching, and all the various pieces of paywork that you follow up on with things like this CDBG grant, so we do appreciate it. With that, any members of the council, any members of the public? If not, I will close this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Our second public hearing tonight, Annexation Agreement for Property Located at 1827 Pleasant Street, ComEd. And this public hearing started at 6:17. We do have one individual who would like to speak to this, and that's Scott Safe, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, and good evening, members of the city council. My name is Scott Safe. I'm with the law firm of Sidley Austin in Chicago. I represent Commonwealth Edison on land use and annexation matters. We appreciate all the work that the city's done on our application. The primary purpose of the proposal, we own the substation at 1827 Pleasant Street. The primary purpose of the project is to do what's called a hardening, which is a fancy term, meaning to change the system of the electrical flows within the substation so that outages, if there are any, could be more quickly isolated and reliability improved. I'm here with our team, George Galrap from our External Affairs Manager. He will likely have his own remarks. Frank Carter, the project manager, and Dave Buckley from Christopher Burke Engineering, our stormwater engineer. We're happy to answer any questions or provide additional detail if there's a need. One technical note is that we have been working with the city attorney and with staff on the annexation agreement. We did submit some final non-substantive edits to the city attorney after, what I understand, may have been the version of the agreement distributed to you all. I'm happy to talk about those minor edits. Really, what their purpose is, is to avoid unintentional inconsistencies between the agreement and the UDO, and to correct some subsection article references to sort of clean up those matters. My understanding, having talked to Mr. Rose, the attorney, is that there's no disagreement with those final edits from staff or from the city attorney, and we ask for your consideration of that version. The other minor item is that we've requested a waiver of second reading and would ask, if possible, for final action.
Scott, I understand that there may be some of your other team members here who would like to speak at this time, or should I call upon our city manager to make his comments? I know he does. George Galrap?
Mayor Smith, city council, staff, audience members and media. My comments are something that's running parallel with this project, and that's an annexation, or, excuse me, an easement agreement for Business Row 88. The mayor, myself, and Bill Nichols, the city manager, have been working on this. As we move forward with the annexation agreement, we've made great strides, and we should have some answers on how we can move forward within the next 30 days or so. Just wanted to give you information about that this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the public? If not, city manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Safe said, and by reference, Mr. Galrap also referred to the matter at hand, which is to have an annexation for about a 5.62 acre property that's currently, well, it's connected to a parcel that is partly in DeKalb County and partly in the City of DeKalb. And the point of all this is to upgrade the facility, to ensure more reliability, as Mr. Safe said, in the event of weather or other things that can happen. We have been talking about the details of this for a while. The substation, as you can appreciate, is unlike other types of structures that we have in our city, and our Unified Development Ordinance doesn't quite address some of the things that need to be done that don't exactly fit with all the things in the UDO. So there are a few waivers here as well. For instance, there won't be bathrooms in the electrical substation part that has the gear and so forth. We're also not going to have all the paved surfaces that we normally would require around the structure, because that kind of high-powered electricity doesn't go well with the asphalt paving, and so there's going to be more gravel there in and around the substation, and matters such as this. The details are laid out in your background, also in my background memorandum. The point of this public hearing is to allow people to address this or have questions. As we get later in the agenda, there will be an action item for the council, and at that time, I will also explain just a little bit about how the Plan Commission reviewed this and what they thought of the proposal. One final note with reference to Mr. Galrap's purpose and his comments. We have indeed been working concurrently on another matter that is of interest to ComEd and to the City of DeKalb, and that is the granting of an easement to help spur the development of a parcel along Peace Road in the Park 88 area, and we are close to an understanding that can be memorialized and brought back to you in about a month. Thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Okay, for the benefit of the city council, we will be asked to act on this item later on the agenda at this point. Any further comments on this public hearing? If not, this public hearing closes at 6:23 PM. There are no special considerations this evening, so let's move on to resolutions. Item J. The first one is Resolution 2019-099, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease in operating agreement with Barb City Manor located at 680 Hayes Boulevard. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
I'd enter, or, I accept the motion from Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any further discussion? Okay, before we vote, we do have a couple of comments. One is Maureen Garrity. The executive director of Barb City Manor. Maureen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Smith and council members, city staff and community members. On behalf of the residents of Barb City Manor and the Barb City Manor Inc. Board of Directors, I want to thank you all for giving Barb City Manor so much of your time and attention these past few months. Managing city government is an enormous responsibility, and we appreciate your due diligence as you try to do your best for our community. Barb City Manor Retirement Home is a self-sustaining not-for-profit. Our day-to-day operations, including routine building maintenance and repairs, are fully funded by resident rents. We have 62 apartments, and we are close to full occupancy. We have just one studio apartment available to rent. We rent on a month-to-month basis, serving primarily the frail elderly age 85 and over. The services that Barb City Manor provides help these seniors remain active and engaged, and help to prevent premature nursing home placement. In 2018, we served 84 senior citizens. Tonight, the service agreement between Barb City Manor and the City of DeKalb is up for a vote. As you consider this item, I want to share with you how Barb City Manor has spent city funds in the past, and what the plans are for any future funding. Over the years, Barb City Manor has used city funds for improvement projects that have added value to the building and contributed to its long-range viability. The first floor of the East Wing was completely renovated to create handicap-accessible apartments. The original screened-in porches, which were walled up and turned into storage rooms when it was a hospital, were converted into four year-round sunrooms. As part of that project, a wheelchair lift was added to the first floor north sunroom. All the windows in the building have been replaced, improving energy efficiency. The dining room was enlarged, and space was added for an activity room. The front entrance was renovated for handicap accessibility. We've replaced roof sections that have exceeded their lifespan and installed an addressable fire alarm system. The chiller and emergency generator have been replaced, and upgrades have been made on the boiler system to meet new building code standards. Many of these building projects were paid for with a combination of city funds, grants, and donations. This year, the East Wing fire escapes are being replaced, and they are 98 years old. And I want to assure you that any city funds that are allocated in the future will be used for long-range improvements and upgrades that will extend the life and usefulness of this beloved community building. The Barb City Manor staff and board of directors are very proud of our 40-year partnership with the City of DeKalb, and we look forward to continuing to serve our senior citizens and our community for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen. Our next individual who would like to speak is Bessie Chronopoulos.
I had a little speech written, but the printer didn't work, so I'm going to have to rely on my memory, which is not so good after Greek Fest. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to urge you to support option three for Barb City Manor. As Maureen said, a beloved facility in this community, beloved for many, many years. A little bit of history. Years ago, community members and leaders worked together with the purpose of, with a vision, with good planning practices in mind, and with a desire to have stability in their community. These factors, many, many years ago, ended up, we ended up, DeKalb ended up with a library, NIU, and a public hospital. These were people who had a vision that this would be good for the community, and it turns out that it was. turns out that it was. Years later, when DeKalb Public Hospital was forced to shut down due to the advent of the new Kishawaki Community Hospital, again, leaders and community members with the factors of, the characteristics of visioning, good planning, and the desire to have stability got together, and Barb City Manor was born. And it has served the community for decades, as you well know. It is an excellent facility that has been put to good use, not only for the residents, but it also provides the stability factor in the surrounding established neighborhood. We're blessed. We are blessed. There's, there's no other way to say it. We are blessed. It has been well utilized and well-run. We've been blessed with a phenomenal board from Barb City Manor, the friends of Barb City Manor, and also probably some of the best administrators going. Maureen is phenomenal, and your predecessors also very, very good people. So take care of Barb City Manor. It's in your hands. And someday, some other person will sit up here and say, years ago, this leadership continued the good practice of visioning, good planning practices, and the desire to have stability in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie.
You bet.
Okay, city manager Nicholas, would you like to add anything?
I would. So as it's been mentioned, the council has discussed a number of options regarding a possible extension to the current lease with Barb City Manor. First, on May 13th, and more recently, on June 10th. The June 10th discussion centered on, I think there was a consensus around looking at a 10-year lease. There were a couple of other options that were discussed on the floor, and one of those was possibly to run out the first five years with a $50,000 a year allocation from the city, and then after that, maybe a renegotiation, and, but the terms of that weren't specific. And then there was another idea, which was to have a 10-year lease, the first five years at about $50,000, and not at about, at half $50,000, and then do a diminishing amount over the six years, six through 10. And so those two options were discussed in a staff-level meeting. I participated in it, and Maureen, and Taryn Thaden, and we knocked that around. Maureen and Taryn had some direction from the board at that point, after listening to the council. I put together what you might call a third option, which grew out of our staff-level discussion on June 14th, and that's option number three on page five of your background. It basically considers a 10-year agreement, but in light of the fact that the city has a carryover obligation of $248,129 in TIF support that has accumulated in recent years, the first year of that 10-year lease, according to option three, would be, would have no additional city allocation. And then $50,000 a year until the last year, when it would diminish to $25,000. So it just happens in the arithmetic of it all that option two and three are very close, about $25,000 apart. The option three was, all the options actually were put before the Barb City Manor Board when it met on June 18th. All three options were considered. Option three was recommended by the board. So I come to you to carry that message to you, and also I recommend your support for option number three.
For option three?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, then, since we have a motion on the floor and a second, that we perhaps best indicate by consensus or by further discussion that the recommendation to approve the execution of a lease to include what our city manager is recommending, and that is option three?
Yes.
I'd offer the amendment to include option three as in the contract.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we amend tonight's motion to be very specific in approving option three as we okay the execution of the lease and the operating agreement.
Mayor, may I, just in terms of procedure?
Yes.
You have a resolution before you with a agreement attached which specifies option number three, so you don't have to amend anything.
Okay, so we don't need this amendment?
You just need a motion and a second.
I'll withdraw. Would you withdraw that motion and?
Okay, withdraw that second, okay. Thank you, city manager Nicholas. Okay, so what we're voting on now is very clear to all of us. Execution of a lease with, for Barb City Manor to include option three, that is included in the background information, which would be $50,000 from year 2020 through year 2027, with a $25,000 allotment in 2028, for a total of $425,000. Clear?
Yes.
Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number two, Resolution 2019-100 authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for Lincoln 311 LLC located at 311 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $25,000. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Fagan. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. The council is well aware that we have a allocation in our 2019 fiscal year of $50,000 for an architectural improvement program. The council has voted two forgivable loans, three, excuse me, three thus far this year for a total of $19,000. And once the funding is approved, the applicants enter into a very short agreement, it's a five-year agreement to maintain, first to complete the improvements and then maintain them. In essence, it's a five-year forgivable loan, according to the program. Tonight, I wanted to describe for you and recommend to you a proposal from Charles and Matt Brown, who own 301 and 311 East Lincoln Highway. They've applied for assistance to do some substantial facade improvements on all sides of their two buildings. To some extent, this will integrate the look of the buildings, and there will be work done, I believe there were pictures attached in your background, so you can see the current conditions, the before, if you will, and then the conditions as they would appear afterward. The, I'll be happy to answer any questions on those, but I just wanted to summarize by saying that this type of renovation is certainly in keeping with the intent of the program. It's moving that wave of innovation and remodeling and renovation, innovation and renovation, to the east, which is good, and taking in another block. At the staff level, we support this application and hope you will as well.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion on this? Alderman Favor.
So just for a little transparency, I am related to the applicant, and I currently do business with the applicant. I've chosen not to recuse myself because, for a couple reasons. One, there are six other aldermen who can vote against this if they feel that this is not a good project. I don't feel, I'm not going to benefit in any way through this project, and I'm related to several city employees. I have several friends who do business in the city of DeKalb. So I, I don't feel it's necessary to recuse oneself at any time there's any sort of relation with a, with an applicant to a city program. As the city manager said, this does fall in line with other programs we've approved. I don't see that this is going to get a no vote from anyone as well. I, you know, again, I think we want to continue to improve the city downtown, so I just wanted to make that clear just in case there were any questions. Thank you.
And I do appreciate your mentioning that, Tony. I really do. Now, your name is Favor. You say, you suggest there are a few more of you around?
There's a few of us.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number two, resolution, excuse me. Number three, Resolution 2019-101 authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for 240 East Lincoln Highway LLC located at 240 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $4,500. Motion, please.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the action just taken by the council, we are at a budget of $6,000 in our AIP program. Now comes Bill McMahon, who's in the audience, I believe. Yes, he is, who's applied for a loan, a forgivable loan to perform the facade improvements that are described in your background. It would include the replacement of the awning in front of his Lincoln Inn, replace a number of wood panels, and install new LED lighting, paint the overall facade, and install also some security cameras for exterior views of that portion of the block in which he is building rest. And the total, the estimated total of these improvements was a little over $9,000. The AIP request was for $4,500, and we recommend your support.
Any further discussion on this request? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Charlie Brown, Matt Brown, Bill McMahon, thank you. Thank you for continuing to improve our downtown area. I mean, you've stepped up, and with city assistance, the momentum continues in downtown DeKalb. So thank you very much. Okay, item number four, Resolution 2019-102 authorizing the solicitation and execution of real property marketing listing agreements for the city properties located at 1101 North First Street and 822 East Lincoln Highway. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas.
The council's recent interest in selling our property at 223 South Fourth has generated some interest in some other parcels. People have come to us, they ask who owns this or that parcel, and they've discovered that we do. So there are two in particular that have shown some interest, and as we have no Realtors on staff, we saw the importance of working with a professional who can also put a market appraisal on the particular properties. One of those is 1101 North First Street. You're familiar with that commercial corner, which is at First and Hillcrest, and it's a prime commercial corner. The problem is we have a contaminated property there, although there is in process now an application that's working its way through the principal state agencies that attend to such things, the State Fire Marshal's Office and EPA. Another property is at 822 East Lincoln Highway, and back in the fall of 2018, the council came into ownership of that particular parcel and raised a multifamily structure. It's a narrow lot. It's not a conforming lot by, by the modern lot dimensional standards, but it is of interest to the people who own the commercial use next door at the corner at ninth. So I thought it was prudent to seek your support, to go out and find professional help to list these properties and to see what we can avail ourselves of. So that's what this is about. I will say that rather than peppering you every, every other council meeting, I have, I'm working on something I'd like to bring to you to address the handful of others that may be marketable at this time. There are a number that I would think are not readily marketable in their current condition, but I will do so at an upcoming meeting. But because of the interest, we'd like to put our toe in the water and see what we can get in the way of legitimate pricing. So that's what this resolution is about, and we ask your support.
Okay. Any discussion or questions of city manager Nicholas? If not, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Number five, Resolution 2019-103 amending section one of Resolution 2018-162 revising the process for licensure of food and beverage vending vehicles to extend the effective date to September 30th of 2019. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fagan. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the background, and I'm particularly appreciative of our executive assistant, Ruth Scott's timely attention to this matter, but as we're just finishing the agenda last week, it came, it was brought to my attention that we had a threshold arriving very quickly with respect to the extension of interim licensure criteria for food trucks. This is something that, we used to have a pretty, not pretty, extremely rigorous standards, and the council in May 2018 loosened them a little bit so that we could generate some interest, and we've had some. We haven't had problems. The council extended that interim licensure period on December 18th for another six months. I'd like to do better than that, bring you back some recommendations. If I had been aware of this, I would have done a little more homework on it. Didn't have the time, but we're just asking for a 90-day extension, which gets us through the prime part of the summer season when these trucks are most often seen, and we'll bring something back to you that you can dig into.
Good. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. We had a public hearing previously this evening on the CDBG. Now, number six is Resolution 2019-104. Now, number six is resolution 2019-104, approving the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, one-year use of funds for Program 26, April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2020. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. I know you spoke to this item initially, Bill, but would you like to speak to this now?
Only to say, we did not have anyone speak to this during the public hearing with the sound counsel, Joanne Rouse. I recommend your support and approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Motion, resolution passes. Thank you very much. Number seven, resolution 2019-105, authorizing an abandoned residential property municipal relief program grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
In the background, I described this, I will say it actually boils down to this. Joanne is always looking for opportunities, and we applied for $75,000 for support for a number of things that can be used to clean up abandoned residential properties or derelict residential properties in some of our neighborhoods. That includes some maintenance, even mowing neglected weeds, tall grass, removing trees and bushes and the like, which often comes with those abandoned houses. And to our pleasure, we didn't get $75,000, but we got $50,000. So what we'd like you to do is authorize that for the purposes defined in this background report.
Okay. Any further discussion on this grant? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Moving right along, number eight, resolution 2019-106, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and execution of an agreement with Lane Christiansen Company for maintenance, inspection, and repair to well number 10 in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six deep wells, three shallow wells. All of them have to be pumped for the water that they provide. In the six deep wells, we have equipment which is very much like what is described in your background for this item tonight. The name of the company that makes the motors that are common to our deep wells is the Byron Jackson type of motor. We have a well, well 10, which is struggling right now. We can take it offline and fill the system with what we need on an average day, and we're confident that even when there's a surge, whatever that may be, a big fire, whatever happens to be, we're in good shape. But it does serve a good part of the west side of our city, and we'd like to pull the motor and see what's happening. You never know until you actually pull these motors to see exactly what they are. They're deep into the shaft. We keep one spare, and we will insert that, but then it's always been prudent that you buy another spare and so forth. So that price for the replacement of motor and whatever else we have to replace couldn't go as high as $90,000. We don't think it will. We have the amount of money that we need in our water fund, and we're asking you to authorize us to waive the bidding in this case because here we are, we've got this type of motor, this type of shaft. It would be a lot more expensive to try to incorporate a different manufacturer's motor, probably have to change the shaft dimensions and so forth. So we're asking you to waive the competitive bidding, which would require a supermajority vote, and to allow us to enter an agreement with Lane Christiansen Company for the type of motor that I described to you.
Yeah, I don't know if it was maybe last summer or a year ago, we had a similar situation, and I don't know if we waived second reading or if we just could not find anybody else to improve that. Do you recall that, Brian? Have we not done business with this company? Am I recalling that name with something that we did not do?
No, that's correct. Can you hear me with this? That is correct. Last year, we pulled well number 11 for emergency purposes. If you recall, we were going to pull well 10 and well 13 last year. We had issues with well number 11 that arose, so we decided to allocate that money last year to have Lane pull that well. As the city manager had noted, the primary reasons, there's really two, that it's beneficial to use Lane. The primary reason is because of the type of motor that it is. It's a Byron Jackson Mercury sealed motor, and Lane is factory certified to work on those motors. They're very safe motor, or motor, excuse me. But with it being a Mercury sealed, they have to be handled in a special way. And so Lane is factory certified, the only company that is factory certified to work on those motors. So that's the primary reason. The other reason is Lane is a local company, and by local, I mean they're in Aurora, Illinois. They maintain a fairly extensive warehouse, facility, repair shop. And so the turnaround from the time that they begin work to the time that the well is back in service is extremely quick compared to other companies. So that's the two primary reasons that we are requesting a waiver of.
Thank you for verifying that my memory served me correctly, you know, so. Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution passes. Number nine, resolution 2019-107, authorizing an agreement with tip-top roofing for replacement of a roof at the city's Seventh Street Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $19,220, with staff authority to approve change orders up to $19,872. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any, nothing, Bill?
Just, actually, the title almost says it all, except that we arrived at that number through a bid process. We had two bidders. The bids are on page 10 of your background, and we've asked for just a little over that low bid to cover any replacement, plywood, or whatever we might have to do.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Number 10, resolution 2019-108, authorizing the transfer of two rolling stock public transit vehicles from the city of DeKalb to Pace. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I may call on Marcus Cox to help a little bit with this. It's unusual. We have four large, the 40-foot Eldorado is the name of the manufacturer, heavy-duty buses in the fleet of the new transit system that is in operation now in the city. Only two of those are being used now, and in fact, the operator, TransDev, of the new line doesn't use that type of bus. They have a low ride type of bus made by a different manufacturer, and so two of these buses are basically sitting in the yard. There's no space in the VAC barn on Bethany Road for them, without any likelihood of their being used in the future. We were approached by Pace, and they are interested in them. Now, normally, we'd say, where do you want to spend? Well, there's a little twist here. All of these buses are purchased really with federal dollars, and there's an expectation, reasonable from the federal level, that you're going to use them for a certain period of time. There'll be certain amount of mileage put on these, and they're going to be doing a certain number of routes and so forth. And if you don't do that, then you have to pay back some money. You don't have to, though, if you give it to another FTA-funded agency such as Pace, and they put them to good use. So that's basically what's before you here tonight. We don't have the money to pay them back, the Fed's back, and we think this is probably the best way around this. It wasn't our money that bought them, so we're before you to authorize this exchange.
Did you say you wanted Marcus Cox to address this issue?
Not necessarily. If I was clear, and if Marcus says I was reasonably accurate, then I think.
Was he reasonably accurate and clear, Marcus?
Yeah, he did an excellent job.
Okay.
Well, he would say that.
Any further discussion on this? It sounds like a good deal. Fortunately, we were able to find this was needed in, what, Arlington Heights?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, so. Okay, roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Number 11, resolution 2019-109, approving a grocery store, small liquor license, for the new Aldi, Inc., doing business as Aldi, location at 2540 Sycamore Road. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fagan. City Manager Nicholas.
This is, as you know, a relocation of Aldi, and in addition to needing a new license at the new location, Aldi has applied for a slightly different designation. Grocery stores have three different types of liquor licenses, large, medium, and small. They've had a medium one, which means that they have a maximum service area of 2,000 square feet. A small is maximum service area of 1,000 square feet. They're content to move to the smaller version, so that's what's before you tonight. We recommend your approval.
Any further discussion on this? Alderman Fagan.
I don't know, can't tell you how many people have asked me this question. When they open?
Dan, help me. Is it?
It'll be open by the last week of July.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That ends your question, Alderman.
Yeah, I did it.
On the record.
Same question. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Now we move on to ordinances. Item K, we have no ordinances tonight on second reading. We do have an ordinance. Item number L, and this relates to the public hearing that we had previously. Number one, ordinance, 2019-046, authorizing an annexation and development agreement, annexing certain property, rezoning to PD1, Plan Development Industrial, that's PDI, and approving plans for the property located at 1827 Pleasant Street, and that's Commonwealth Edison Company. I would entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
That was moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith. Alderman, or City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, this, as you said, is the action item for the public hearing that was held earlier this evening. The Plan Commission took this up back in March. As you know, we've been continuing with council's consideration for a while, and voted unanimously in favor of the various waivers and the steps necessary to affect what's been proposed. We recommend that the council approve the Plan Commission recommendation on this, and also, if you would consider waiving second reading, here we are, almost July, first of July. There's a lot of work to do at this station before the snow flies, and it would expedite the construction project if that could happen. Thank you.
Any discussion? We'll vote on the first reading initially. Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Smith.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
This ordinance passes on first reading. Do I hear a motion to waive second reading and approve?
Move to waive and approve on second reading?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Alderman Verbic.
Please remind me, Mr. Nicholas, how long the construction is set to take?
How long it will take?
Concern about timing?
Yeah, maybe we have some gentlemen here who can speak to that specifically.
For the record, Scott's safe. The answer is, we'd like to begin site work in a month or so, and that would take up the first phase of the work, so that the electrical work could then proceed seamlessly in the spring of next year. I'm looking at Mr. Carter, just to confirm I'm correct, and the goal is to complete everything by the end of next year. So there's two phases, site work and then the prime electrical work.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes?
With the site work not needed for a month, I would suggest keeping this open, not approving this on second reading this evening, so it remains in the public view for a couple more weeks.
I think the challenge to that, respectfully, Alderman, is that there's an issue with having the preliminary permits issued, so that the initial work, so when I say begin work in a month, it's really the heart of the work, but there's some initial work to begin in July, just to get going. So I look to Mr. Carter just for help with that, if there's anything to add, but I think that's the essence for the request for waiver of second reading.
Yeah, if he could speak to it, then it would be great.
Yes, please.
Mayor and Councilman, public, I'm Chip Carter. I'm the project manager from ComEd. Appreciate your time tonight. We are getting backed into a bit of a corner due to the timing issues. We have veg management issues. We need to get ahead of the curve on. We've got a sewer to move ahead of time over plan and start full civil by August 1st. In order to do that, we need these other steps out of the way, and we want to get as much done before the snow flies our civil, which is all our concrete work and such, prior to the end of the year, so we can start full force with our electrical installations by January 1st. So any way we could expedite this would be greatly appreciated. So we've also had to move a lot of our, behind the scenes, a lot of our funds around in order to make this happen this year, and the more, the more funds that get pushed into 2020, it's harder on our corporation, as we funded so much money for this year, as another aspect of our, less of our projects.
Alderman Fanouken?
Yeah, I noted that Alderman Verbic wanted more time for being the public eye. I'm looking at the background, and it was that March 20 was at the planning and zoning, which means it was in the public eye prior to that.
Yeah, I noted that Alderman Verbic wanted more time for being the public eye. I'm looking at the background, and it was that March 20 was at the planning and zoning, which means it was in the public eye prior to that. So here we are, three months later, I think that's plenty of time for this to have been vetted by the public, and I would recommend we go ahead and waive second reading.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with you, Alderman Finouken. We've looked at this at least two or three times, and we had a chance to look at the material prior to the public hearing, which we moved second. Didn't we postpone that or move that twice? So I would concur with that, Alderman Finouken, although I certainly appreciate, Alderman Verbic, your concerns regarding waiving of second reading, so. So it's been moved and seconded that we waive second reading on this and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I, one N.
That ordinance is approved. Okay, let's move to reports and communications. This is where we give our council members an opportunity to say anything they like. So we'll start with our first ward, Alderman, Carolyn Morris.
Along with all the activities that we, that Michael Embry spoke of from this past weekend, there was one more activity that may have fallen off your radar, but within the first ward, a couple of women have begun a double Dutch club or meeting, and so that organization is going to be meeting every Saturday from noon to 2 until August 3rd, and it's open to the public, they're looking for, working toward grants and stuff, you know, to get some jump ropes. We were working with, so I was there with them on Saturday for a couple of hours, and it was a really great turnout. It was great to see, you know, we started off slow, and then gradually more and more people came. It was pretty awesome. And, you know, I really want to highlight the mentorship value there, that these women, as they're investing their time, you know, the greater value is that they're mentoring young people in the community and giving back.
Yeah, great.
So I'm really pumped about that. I want to make sure everybody knows about it, and that we're spreading the word, and so that we can get more people to come out and join and support in various ways. That's one. The next thing is, I will be having a first ward meeting coming up on July 2nd from 3 to 5 o'clock at American Dream Tax, right on Hillcrest there. The mayor will be in attendance, as well as the city manager, Bill Nicholas, so I'm really excited to have everyone there.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Alderman Finouken.
No report.
Alderman Smith.
No report.
Alderman Fagan.
No report.
Alderman McMat, McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Verbic.
No report.
Alderman Favor.
No report.
What a weekend this was in DeKalb. On Saturday morning, I joined Officer Aaron Lockhart and a host of other area officials and citizens in following the rollers, thunders, motorcyclists, and veteran Representative Frank Byerlotzer in the motorcade visiting area senior facilities. We visited in DeKalb Pine Acres, Barb City Manor, the Rehab and Nursing Center, Oak Crest, and Bethany Rehab Center. It was a great event, it afforded us the chance to say thank you to our senior veterans. On Saturday, as Mike Embry said, we debuted the Balloon Brews and Blues Festival at the airport. Although it was a tad windy, the balloons portion of the day was very limited. However, as Mike Embry said, we had a good crowd, and we expect a bigger one next year. Sunday marked the final two-day run of Greek Fest at Hopkins Park, and Hopkins Park is once again the site of the third DeKalb Municipal Band Concert tomorrow night, featuring soloist Gavin Wilson. And finally, the First United Methodist Church's very popular Celebration Corral kicks off a three-night run at the Bootle Auditorium on Northern's campus, with Friday's attraction being recording artist Sailor Jerry. So plenty to do in our fair city, for sure. City Clerk Lynn Fizikus, anything to report?
Yes, a couple of announcements. Wanted to let council and the public know that our informal group that's going to be looking at DeKalb's ethics ordinance is going to start having meetings very soon. If anybody is interested in getting into the loop on this or participating in any way, please contact me about that. We will probably also post some things at the City Barbs website, or rather, at their Facebook group, to, in order to broaden the number of people who can participate in, as we solicit, more opinions. Speaking of the City Barbs Facebook group, we have also posted the city clerk's progress report there, so you can find it there and download it, or if you don't do Facebook, you can let, shoot me an email, and I'll send a copy. And then the third announcement is that we have actually put our speaker request forms on the city's website in a couple of different places, so that people who are planning to come to a city council meeting and speak can fill out their form in advance if they would like to. It is a fillable form. Thank you.
Well, that's a great idea, the speaker request form. On the ethics meeting, are we going to run into open meetings violations if a couple of us show up?
Mayor, if a couple of you show up, we might have a problem with that. However, yeah, if you don't, if you don't show up, then there's no, then there's no problem.
You're not de-inviting us, are you?
I'm not de-inviting anybody, but yeah, yeah, that would, that would be a problem.
That would be a concern, yeah.
But if, if we don't have, you know, if we don't have too many of you showing up, this is just a very informal group, it's not a formal committee at all, we're not using city resources for this, we know what the budget situation is.
Very good, thank you. City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
Okay, there being no further reports, I would like to indicate that I would ask for approval to hold an executive session to discuss executive session minutes as provided for in five ILCS 120 slash 2C 21. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we recess into executive session. Roll call.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
We will now move into executive session.